All right, welcome everyone to January 17th, 2023. January 2023 is here and we're starting off a new year. So we will start off with our agenda here. So be it resolved, council of town in Niqwa approved the regular meeting agenda for January 17th, 2023, moved by Pontius, seconded by Kostic. All in favor? Here. All right, and then everybody's had a chance to last minute minutes meetings. Be it resolved that council of town in Niqwa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held December 20th, 22nd circulated, moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Sisley. All in favor? O, is carried. Okay, now look at moving into our public hearing. So be it resolved, the town council, that the council of the town in Niqwa do not open this public hearing. Representation to variation application of D-052022 of Daniel Zettler, respecting Southwest 14, 34, 14, 15, and 475 Main Street East. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Kostic. All in favor? O, is carried. All right, so who's speaking?
Scott Councilor.
So your first application just for subdivision requires variation due to the redesignation of the area to agricultural restricted residential. It requires 20 acres minimum. And post variation is to reduce the minimum site area from 20 acres to 14.90 acres within the agricultural residential zone. The affected area is southwest 34, 14, 15 west, 475 Main Street southeast. And reason we need support of it would be to fulfill the subdivision requirements to set up a 14.90 acre parcel from the north property line.
Okay.
Did you have any objections or?
No, we haven't received anything. We had one person just have a couple comments for farming purposes, but there's really nothing at all.
All right, also have any questions of Scott or Ben? Very clear. So if there is nothing else, then we can make a resolution. Be it resolved that town in Niqwa do now adjourn this public hearing at 7:06 PM. Moved by Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Nidol. All in favor? Here. So now.
No, if they're all present, the people that are going to present, I would just proceed.
Okay.
Blair, you're not waiting for anybody last night?
No.
Okay.
Just next to them.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're chomping, you're here for Margaret Lawrence?
I am. Yeah, so, mayor councils, got my prepared notes here. Thanks for the opportunity to make this short presentation on behalf of the Margaret Lawrence Home Committee. We appreciate the support we regularly receive and have received over the lifetime of the home from the town. So I have two goals that I'll try to address briefly tonight. One is persuade the continued value that the home gives to the community. And the other is to make two requests regarding our funding we've applied for. Under the first heading, we're a pretty small community. I think we're a punch above our weight, I hope so. Over the past year, we've held a number of community events, Canada Reads, a book sale, craft sale, garden art walk during the summer, that have provided modest fundraising for operations, but also the main goal is to provide value to members of the Niqwa area community. Of course, the home is still open as the tourists draw. And while our tourism numbers have definitely dropped since the house opened in 1986, we still welcome hundreds of Manitoba Canadian and international guests, many of whom come expressly to visit the hometown of Margaret Lawrence, a writer still recognized internationally as one of Canada's finest. These visitors spend money locally when they come. Tourism advertising around the province and across the country and media coverage of Niqwa regularly reference Margaret Lawrence, the home, and the cemetery Stone Angel. This past late summer, August, the home was visited by a German lady that was traveling walking across Canada. And we understand that she had written about her walk, it's been published in the Globe and Mail, and Niqwa was one of the places she highlighted. The tourism slogan for the town, where stories take a beautiful turn, owes half of its atmosphere to the beauty of our town and its natural setting, and the other half to some of the stories that were written here, and that's Margaret Lawrence. Both these attributes can need enhancement supported by town council. Second task this evening is about our grant. Over the past seven years or so, financial support from the town has decreased. Last year, a grant consisted of forgiveness of a portion of our property taxes and $1,000, which we greatly appreciate. While over the past probably about that time, seven years, we've been in a pretty financially secure position. Recent large expenses like the new roof that the house is supporting, the ongoing costs of maintaining the home, like plumbing and heating, and staffing costs have worn away at our savings. We have done fundraising, we've applied for grants and been successful in some of those applications, and we've invested in the beautiful Plains Community Foundation to access matching funds and ensure steady income for the foreseeable future. I'm here tonight to ask you to increase the grant portion of your support to match or come close to our request, which I believe again this year is for $2,500. Also ask that we not be restricted in our use of these funds, but be able to apply them to our ongoing priorities, maintenance and staffing. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them to the best of my ability or find answers and communicate those to you later.
Okay, any questions? 1986, I didn't realize it was that long.
Yeah, 86, 87.
Yeah, I just did nothing.
Was it open year round?
No, during the summer, May 1st to September 1st. We found actually this year that one of our busiest times was after that September long. September long weekend started, starting on September 1st. That was a fairly busy time. And what we put on the answering machine was, and I think on our website, maybe not at that point, but that if someone was coming through and really serious about coming to visit the home, then a board member tried to move them there. And we had.
Several tours, yeah.
Like quite a few. I did, I did a couple, and other board members did some as well. But summer is a busy time. During the winter off season, we do have those fundraising events, and those are run by volunteers and board members.
Is there any partnerships that you guys have got to do fundraising and stuff to work with other groups in town?
Thank you. We did, I won't say partner, we helped out at the antique sale, working the door. And we are going to be making desserts and helping to serve at the Legion dinner in March. And we'd be open to other opportunities.
What about a young authors program where you're teaching history?
Something I've thought about, Murray, yeah. Just not something that we've done at this point. We've certainly, I've certainly taken some classes through the house. And when we've been doing the unit or story or, and I believe some of the other teachers at the high school have done that as well. We've also taken some tours through the house for some services. That was a year or two ago. And I think we got a request to do that sometime in the future for a group from there as well. So some of that part, you know, some of that providing some opportunities for youth. Thought about, you know, like a short story contest, things like that, that we haven't actively received. It's an idea.
Do you currently receive any funding from some of the surrounding RMs or municipalities?
We don't. And that's, someone just brought that to my attention the other day. I've never, as far as I know, states might involve in boards, not something that's ever been been attempted, but.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
We didn't see any other financials, but I mean, sometimes you don't know how stuff gets reported coming in, so I just thought of that.
Right, no. Okay, no, we have not, not looked at.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
A little earlier than her, but I don't mind.
I am absolutely ready. It took me a minute, plugged it up in and turned down the lights and thing. So, cool. Well, thank you for having me come and speak again this year. Once a year, I like to come and inform the council on what's happening at Arts Forward and what we're doing and how we're spending our money and how we're spending your money. So thank you for that opportunity. If you haven't seen us lately, things have changed. Have you seen us lately? We've been revitalized, new staff, new board members, and new board members have wider audience reach. We've got some younger, more vibrant board members. Not that us old guys aren't that vibrant, but lots of more new ideas with an increased number of board members. And now the COVID restrictions have lifted. Again, that has really led to things happening at Arts Forward. We've had exponential growth in membership, but Arts Forward has become the place to be in Niqwa. When we value events going on, it said they are, they are well attended. Arts Forward is a version from COVID, stronger than it was before. It is the community, and it has been in the past, the community and regional hub for arts and culture for all ages, abilities, and financial backgrounds. I want to put a stress that financial background is weak. We really strive to keep this affordable. And we facilitate exploring, learning, and healing. And that's, healing part is very important, that's what it's called, as well, through many different classes and events. And one thing we focus on is building partnerships between businesses in the community, nonprofit organizations, as well as the surrounding RMs and regions, regions like Westman and, you know, the other regions around us for arts. We have become a very well-respected arts venue in Manitoba. There was so much happening. I went to Facebook, Arts Forward Facebook, and I just, I just grabbed some things that have either recently finished or just about to start. And I just grabbed a small sample. There is so much happening at Arts Forward. Every day, there's, there's things going on, there's things going on. If you're wondering what's, what's going on at Arts Forward, check our Facebook page. There, it is a wealth of information. There's just stuff happening constantly. We have, I'm going to talk about six different focuses here. One of the focuses on affordability. We try to keep things affordable through partnerships, sponsors, grants, donations, and the payments program. In this picture here, you see some partnerships going on. We've got the town in Niqwa are dumping dirt that men shed into the containers that Men's Shed has built. And Arts Forward working on that as well. So that's, that's an example, one of partnerships that we have built. But here's a bunch of other partnerships. We're not going to read them all and tell you what they all were, but, I mean, this is, this is the groups that we partner with and the organization we partner with in our community, in and around our community. One example of a partnership, well, the town Niqwa. We've got, you've got free facility rental, free, it costs you money. I mean, thank you very much for the grant that you received, but with that grant, you also get facility rental, ten times. But we also partner in other ways. For example, there's a days off school program that we work with the town Niqwa Recreation Partner as well. Also, the Indigenous Culture Day was a partnership, Winter Wonderland, Monster Mash, and other activities that are in the works right now. So definitely, the town Niqwa is one of our valued partners. Second focus is on mental health and wellness. We know that COVID has taken its toll on mental health. And we strive to be a place where people go out, socialize in a fun atmosphere. So in all sorts of things, things that we've got either going on right now or just had or coming up, things like moms morning out, where moms with kids can drop, drop their kids off. They've got people that mind their kids, and they get a morning out to do their own thing. They're at Arts Forward, doing some sort of planned activity. Men's Shed is the home of Men's Shed. It's one of the partnerships that we have around the organization of our community. We have ladies game nights, plan, paint nights, trivia nights, and any of our workout programs are all designed to focus on mental health and wellness. Mental wellbeing through art, art in a social setting. And nobody's, none of these people that you see in the bottom right corner are going to sit at home and paint at home. They will come, 25 people will get together and paint and have a great time. And just, you know, after, after COVID, just getting together and doing something like that is just, is healing. It's a healing kind of atmosphere. Another focus is focus on youth. We've got a days off school program where when there is no school and, and moms are wondering, and parents are wondering, what do we do with our kids? We both have to work, what do we do with our kids? Well, there's a days off school program. So if you're, if there is no school that day, wondering what they're doing with the kids, well, you can enroll in a days off school program. It's a partnership that we have with the town of Niqwa Recreation Partner, as well as the Yellow River Center. It's also something called Field and Table Club, where kids grow food and they go in the kitchen and they learn how to use that food to make other food. Another youth program is Monster Mash, so we can have that Halloween. We've also got HMK Niqwa Middle School and NACI art exhibits. We've had two of those art exhibits already, the NACI exhibit is coming up. At the same time that we've got those art exhibits, we have piano students who are providing the background music for those exhibits. Some other programs, Kids in Kitchen, Teens in Kitchen, multiple different kinds of dance lessons, music lessons, and after-school art programs. So we do a lot of work with youth. Couple of photos from things that are happening. That HMK art exhibit was quite impressive. Art was, the place was very, very popular. Field and Table Club, there's a couple pictures from that, kids involved. And that, that was a really great program for a number of reasons. One was it taught a lot of kids, and therefore the kids taught their, their parents how to grow food and then what to do with that food. So it, it was an extremely beneficial program. There's 20 people last summer in the program, which was as many as we could take. And there's a waiting list for the summer, so it's an extremely popular program. Another focus is on the community. There's a farming market operating out of Arts Forward in the summer months. Also Indigenous Culture Day is a community event. Raph, I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but it was a live art experience, which means you can watch the artists and how they create their art. So you could watch them painting or sculpting or whatever it is they did. You have the thing as more inclusive organization. We do hold art classes there for touch wood students. We also have available to us American Sign Language translator and special needs assistant when needed. Talked a little bit about Raph, and if you weren't sure, ever sure what Raph stood for, it stood for Riverband Market, Arts Forward, what we have Farmer's Market, and a live art show, Farming Tourism Niqwa. Next year, we're also partnering with Co-op, and we're so happy because Raph gets to be craft. And that's what the arts is about, it's about crafts. So we, we can change, and we hope that none of those things ever drop out because we'll have to think of a new acronym, but.
Craft?
Craft. What do you know?
We're all around the home.
Craft, D, there you go. Y, yes. So keep, keep raising your ideas of what we can call this. I just want to show you just, and I don't know if I have the time. The hardest thing about this whole thing was trying to figure out, we've got so many things I'd love to show you, but figuring out how much time we have. So if you're wondering what Raph was about, well, at Arts Forward, we had artists displaying their art and doing their art, so you could see how art was made. And, you know, for a lot of people, it took the mystery of how do you do that? How do you use a brush to do that? Well, the secret is they don't use a brush, they use something else. Take a look at that tool you're using right there, that is not a brush. And so it was just, it was incredible art experience for people to be able to see the art and also see how art was made. We had things going on inside, we had things going on outside. They're outside, they were painting our piano. You might have seen that as you drove by, our beautiful painted piano, which was in perfect tune and you could play it for about two weeks. And then we had a great big rainstorm and it was no longer playing. And certainly after the winter, it's, it's not going to be played. But it's a great heavy piece of art right now. So this is, yeah, a little bit of what was going on inside, a little bit of what was going on outside. There's a piano being painted. It was quite a cool day for us. All right, let's get on to see. I better stop that, I just have to look for a hand in a second. Indigenous Culture Day, we have 1,100 people in attendance that, at last year, that included many different school groups plus community members. And we're planning for a larger next year, we're planning inviting more schools. And we're hoping to have somewhere around the 2,000 mark next year for Indigenous Culture Day. Another focus is on efficiency. The Niqwa Community Arts Calendar is initiated by Arts Forward. We want to improve communication between organizations because we were planning so many events and we found that we were conflicting with other events in our community. So we wanted to find, okay, we, we're planning all this stuff, when is everything else? So we're going to work around that. So there's kind of an initiative, an initiative that Arts Forward work with Niqwa Tourism, how we're going to fruition. And basically, there's a couple of places you can, if you're not sure where to find it, point your phone, camera at that, at that code there, and it'll take you to the right place. And is it being used? Yeah, this is December's example, December 22. This is the events that were on there, library events are on there, Arts Forward events are on there, Al-Anon meetings, there are all, there's all sorts of events on here. Not everything that we would still like to see. We would like to see more groups using this, but there's still a lot of stuff on there. If you go on, you think it'll be January, there's, there's a ton of stuff happening in January as well. Finally, our focus is on fiscal responsibility. Last fiscal year, we say it goes from September to September for us, our income was $135,000 roughly, expenses $102.7, we have profit of about almost $9,000. And because of that, our mortgage is now paid off. But, you know, this fiscal year, not last fiscal year, so paid off around, it was end of December, beginning of January, somewhere out there. So yes, we're pretty happy about that. This year, creating our budget, we're looking at a balanced budget. Our budget's almost $170,000 for income and expenses. Income is up and expenses are up for a couple of reasons. Biggest reason is capital projects. So income, the arts relies on grants, it's just a, it's a back, like the Mount Theatre Centre, one of the valets. I mean, everybody relies on grants. We had $67,000 roughly in grants last year. So you can see the town of Niqwa, you know, we're grateful for the grant. It's not the only grant that we apply for, we apply for lots of grants. We are, have applied or are planning on applying for almost $94,000 for the grants this year. Why? Well, because of our capital projects and special events, I mean, that's the main reason. We have a facility we have to maintain, we need to, what's really important is our roof repair because if your roof is rotten, the rest of your building is rotten as well. So we need to repair our roof. But also we, we need to do a kitchen renovation, furnace replacement. Right now, we've got a bad needed together and it's working. And also we have flooding and we've got some renovation to do because of that as well. The other special event is Indigenous Culture Day. And we can, we can go bigger with this, bigger than we have in the past. And so, and, but it costs money to run an event like that, like running a Willie Festival or wherever, it does cost money. And you don't, you don't charge admission to get that money back, so it is a, it is something. So our big ask this year, and you've probably seen this already because we've, we've sent this in, is $22,000 to assist with our capital projects and special event. And remember that our capital projects are those areas right there. Really, that's, that's what we're looking for, assistance with this. Do you have questions?
Not a question, but certainly, I mean, there's a lot of activities since COVID has, has lightened up for us. There's a lot of activities that you've heard about through this past, and I sit down on the board, so that's, that's interesting as well.
Congratulations. Yeah, feels pretty good.
Have you started the piano and guitar lessons, and banjo and violin, and ukulele, and trombone?
Yeah, pretty much. Me personally, no. But yeah, we do have, we have of course piano instructors, Eric is our piano instructor. We also have a person who is doing guitar lessons, but he will give banjo lessons. Steve will give banjo lessons. He plays pretty much any instrument, and he will give lessons. So right now guitar, but something else that, yeah, we have a person there.
Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Mr. President. Bye. Okay, and just to note that Councillor Sisley that removed herself from the conference and there's no replays.
One thing that I was giving you control is your presentations are really good. Why don't you offer all the big presentations part of my thing?
As you asked.
I'm saying it's good.
I've announced it, offered, you know, songwriting and stuff like that, but I don't know, I'm a busy guy, so, yeah.
After, after 11:00 in the morning, not then.
Yeah. That's, that's, yeah, that's something I guess, if somebody was interested, I could, I don't know. Are they good? Ah, what's good about them? I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, I know it's a little early, but Ken, would you do yourself or me like to present next? Both? Perfect.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and to council staff and visitors. Ken Woodell, today I'm representing Niqwa, thank you, Hockey Club and the MACPD. Probably most of you know, I have a small management contract with MACPD. And for the five, six years I've been involved, we've brought MACPD up to a staff of four plus a summer student. Paid off the odd item credit, $25,000. And as of today, they have, I shouldn't tell you this, but they're looking for money. $40,000 in the bank. We also have a term deposit of $40,000 to pay off our stern loan on comes through next December. So that will take $60,000 off our, off our debt side. And, but there's still a lot of year left to use them. We do have, because the money comes in chunks, we're fortunate we all get money from. Because the money comes in chunks, we're fortunate to be able to get money from, through NACTV for the local general initiative program, from federal government, also, Canadian Broadcast Rights Association royalties, which amounts over $40,000 a year now. And we were able to double that up, because they changed from $12 hours a day programming to $24 hours a day program, which virtually doubled our royalties. So, tonight, speaking on behalf of Rain, she's, as you all know, she's quite as smart as I am. And we are looking, we've done some things through the Niqwa Titans in the last year, which maybe you may know of, but I think will give interest, is we expanded and upgraded the Niqwa Titans dressing room, at the expense of the team donations and of labor and material that's in purchases. And so, that's an improvement to the Yellowhead, and no cost to the Yellowhead. And some improvements to the Yellowhead, as much as other teams do use the dressing room, such as the Turner Champions, it was there, this clean really helped them, they were able to use that. And we'll be out of the dressing room for two weeks when Bitterer Curling is on. We've also built the Yashu Lounge, or Emperor's Lounge as they call it. And that was done with donated labor, donated some purchase labor, some purchased material, but totally at the cost of the Niqwa Titans, which is definitely an improvement to the Yellowhead at no cost to the Yellowhead. It's being used for birthday parties, for game day parties, and it'll be used as a media lounge for Bitterer Curling, so they're very, very happy to have a special spot for that. So, tonight, we're approaching Niqwa's assistance with an approximately $12,000 project. And so, it's not a bad assumption. We are mandated by the MJGAL with their contract with Hockey TV to have our camera at Center Ice, which we moved from the booth to Center Ice about three years ago. And it's pretty darn cold out there for the camera operator, I should say, but it's mandated, we have to have the broadcast, the video broadcast has to come from Center Ice, which makes sense. The old booth, which was built by NACTV, is in the Yellowhead, it was built at total cost of NACTV. And I'm not sure how much was material or donated, or labor, or whatever, but it's been there for a long time. And it's served as, it's still a good structure. Then with the proposal, this proposal, once we get this built, then we will revert to the Yellowhead to be used for a private manager's office, or even a small reception, and it's not very big, but it's certainly the best view in the whole arena, that's behind lots of warm. So, we are looking at putting a Center Ice on the south side, high up on the, a media booth. We are mandated, again, by the League to have a better media booth. We have not fulfilled that obligation. We're mandated to have a place where the out-of-town radio stations or television, for that matter, can broadcast from, which we don't have. And so, we've taken a little bit of bribing over the years from the sportscasters, because they chatted up a bit about how their broadcast booth is a seat on the bleachers beside a power outlet where they could plug in themselves. So, this will give a radio broadcast opportunity for out-of-town visitors. A new booth will also provide a better opportunity for broadcasting other events as well. But that's somewhat contingent on maybe our volunteer volunteers and salary per staff to do more events, but there certainly is a lot more we could be broadcasting from the Yellowhead, those live, among paid for. What we're looking at is, as I say, a broadcast booth, the engineering plans of the $12,000, a $1,000 offshore that's been donated by Pam Sumner, and so, we have engineered plans for the booth. And the plans have the roof by Jack Bron as well. We have lumber and construction supplies, have $2,500 have been promised by Home Arbor as a donation to the Yellowhead, and to NACTV, and to the Titans, whoever, whatever. We do need those, and we're really estimating this, because we haven't been able to find even a supplier at all, the price that I know it's out there, but we need Lexi glass. Those were Lexi glass for viewing and for safety, other than mechanical and some technical wiring of $2,000. Some kind of networking cables and supplies to hook us back into our, into our modem and...
All the broadcasting equipment?
And broadcasting equipment, thank you. The $2,500 for the construction labor, which we think we'll, we'll get some of that donated. And then equipment installation, a little $5,000. We've got about $3,000, $3,500 split now in donations against the $12,000. So, that leaves us at $8,500 request, but if you're certain you're hopeful, a little more in donations, then that would be a common story. So, that's kind of where it's at, and that's all. Very, you've done the work, and you've worked the best so you can.
Yeah. That's an outline of the project right there. One of the elements to stress is there's, if you ever look at the schedule for the Ace of the Yellowhead, it's in constant use. So, there's a lot we could be doing there, but it's also a coty, in the summertime. We had that fundraiser for Ukraine there, which we were literally sitting on the features to film. There was a book sale that was in there, there's other events that happen in that space. So, we're not, I just want to stress, we're not just talking about hockey, because the Titans are a tall. There's a lot more technicals on there. And I was sort of here to answer any questions about the general operations of NACTV as well. So, I think you have some idea of what's going on there, I've figured most of you went to my chair already, and some of you are yet to come. But, yeah, and I'm sort of here to address any questions for that.
To the side note to that, to most of our side notes, NACTV is available to between $550,000 and $600,000 homes across Manville, across Canada, and we're online, of course, so that's available worldwide. And we have our own YouTube channel, and we have some, some of our programs are archived, so you can, you can watch the ones that are in, and also, maybe this, this place.
Where you do three times each time?
Yeah, at least.
Three times. And so, we've taken, I think we've taken things to, I would say, a higher level, but a different level from what it was five or six years ago. NACTV's been going for over 40 years now, and some great, great workloads that by the early people involved, we all know who they are, or who they were. We've paid tribute to them in an appropriate fashion over the years. We're moving on to another step here, and this is one of, another level, this is another step in that. But, yeah, so, she's as smart as I, I've just done the sales.
We know where our roles are.
No, it, let's face it, it has done the community well, certainly, it was a Richard AGM, and it was nice to see the amount of work in that, that's been accomplished even just as pastors. Well, congratulations to your group, it's nice to see. Is there any questions, please? No, sounds like we're all pretty familiar with your group.
Well, I hope that the council will be able to look favorably on this, because it's, as I say, that, you know, the Titans have put quite a bit of money into the time and effort into the dressing room and the VIP lounge, and now they're willing to put some into this as well. But, you know, there's, the team is still struggling financially, there's no question about that. The financial statements are public documents, and if anybody wants to see them, they can see what's going on there. But the, the Niqwa Titans, it's the first time in 11 years that we have been paying $500 at the Christmas rate, so there's definitely been an improvement. We are very, very pleased with our current management team. And, and I think that the chances of making the playoffs are, are pretty good. There's still a couple or three points out of the playoffs, but we're inclining. But NACTV is a, is a Niqwa success story, far older than the Niqwa DAs, Niqwa Titans, and, you know, about 10 years earlier than, than the Navy started. And so, it's, I'm just been, been very, I was very skeptical, and scared, quite frankly, to take this project on, to try to invent, help manage, and guide the board. But I like to think that when I give them all the things, we figure out a way to make money. And Mr. Mayor, you've heard me say this, and most of you others have heard me say this too. My job in this community is to keep the doors open on things, so that the opportunities are a place to walk into. And certainly, the royalties and LGI, and some of the other things that have come through the door, one that will enable to come through the door, we have to keep the door open. Yeah, the door has to be open for the opportunities to have a place to come into. And so, that's been my business philosophy for close to 50 years, I've been in the community now more than 52 years, and won't see a lot of water going under the bridge. And hope to continue for a lot more years.
I have many, 50 years.
Anybody worried about me retiring? I have no intention of retiring, so.
No, you can only pull that one for your...
I'll be 75 next March, but that's only a number.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you very much.